A meeting to order. Before we get into the meeting, I just wanted to thank a number of people. One, I'd like to thank all the residents in the village for, you know, kind of heating our pleas and cutting back and scaling back for the for Halloween. I heard it went, I wasn't in the impacted areas of Parrot Street and Parsonage, but I heard it was pretty calm and and things, it was kind of like back to normal a bit. And people could still go trick or treating, but there weren't the huge crowds. So thank you to all the residents in those areas. And my apologies for spelling parrot wrong twice. No one detected that, but I was scolded on that. It's two Ts. Never happen again. I promise. The other thanks would be to the to all the poll workers, you know, through the all over the country really, but especially to our guys. I go to the Methodist church and that's my polling station and and they were they were really professional there and it wasn't an easy task, long lines, something no one ever had experienced before and and they had to disinfect everything as they went. So they did a really great job as they always do. So thank you to our local, our local poll workers did a great job. And thank you once again to everyone for the Halloween scale back. Much appreciated. That said, we'll get into our meeting here tonight. We have a few things to take care of. One is request to hire Lexapro for updating Cold Spring Police Department's policy to conform to state standards. I see Larry's here. Larry, do you want to speak to this a bit?
I don't see Larry on.
It's his owner. Larry, you're muted, Larry?
How was that? Are we good?
We're good.
Yeah, the Lexapro company basically does, it's almost like a template of all the procedures in New York State. They actually do it across the country, but they do it specifically for whatever state laws come up, whether it be executive orders by the governor or some of the laws have been changed by the legislature during the year. Since our police policy is a couple of years old, they will have me up to date. If we do accept, if you do approve it, they will have us up to date with all of the laws, regulations, executive orders. It's a major tool for us to get everything updated to the governor's new executive order. And also, like I said, all of the police departments pretty much use it. The sheriff's office uses it, town official uses it, Kent uses it. I've been speaking to the other chiefs across the county. We have our chief's meetings after the police panel review that Mary Ellen has been doing. So they're all pretty much using the Lexapro template on it. So if we do join them, they will, we will be a part of that kind of whole group. We'll be separate, we'll be on, but I'll be connected with them where I can look at some of their ideas and stuff like that and get everything together to update the police policy. And once, that's going to take, take a bit because it's a lot of legwork. It's a lot of changing things, sort of updating that I have to do on my part. Once I do get that done, I will present that to the village board. We take a look at it and then I do believe if it's acceptable at that time, I do believe it goes out to public, public opinion. And then the public can take a look at it. That will be a time later on down the road. But the company, from what I understand, everybody, a lot of the police departments are very happy with their service. They also with this, with this year's subscription, it basically is the price right now. We'll also get a couple of training sessions where they'll do training on the rules and regs and they'll do some training with, I do believe, with use of force and stuff like that. So if you come into work, you can go on the computer, you do a couple of probably about an hour or so of training on that. They'll have different quizzes that you have to go through and stuff. And then I will get to see all the updated, after they've taken them and done the training on it, I will see who is on it, who's not on it, along with Officer Bollinger, who is our training officer.
Larry, um, so once this is done, I mean, I know you, we talked about this before and it will include all of the state regs and all the state laws and stuff like that. So once we've got our Cold Spring Police Department handbook ready and then we have to go out according to the governor's executive session, executive mandate to all the people in the village. So if we make adjustments and we say we don't, we want to change this to say something else, we can easily do that, right?
Yeah, correct. It'll be all PDF. I can go in there and look at it. I could change things. We could change paragraphs of it depending on what we want to implement, what we don't want to implement. Definitely, it's going to be a, a information from us and what we're looking to do. It's going to be some public input. It's going to be the board's input, my input, input from what I've seen across the county and other police departments that kind of fits us. Village of Fishkill, a town of Fishkill is small village, I should say, as we are. I haven't got a chance to look at their police policy, but I'd like to look at it as soon as I, as soon as we get into the Lexapro system, I'll be able to pull theirs and to see what fits for them in the small village that they have that may work for us. See if ours, what our manual now has in there that maybe, maybe mimics theirs that we won't have to change. Like I said, it's all information gathering at that point, again, from us, from the public, from the, from law enforcement to come, of course, with the, to come up with the new police reform.
Thank you.
Is there a lot that's going to have to change in your opinion, Larry? With the way we're doing business currently or handling the department now?
It's not going to be a lot. It's most of our training, not should say most of our training, some of our training now is done via computer anyway with the MRI system. So Ed will put in some training classes on that you need to complete by a certain date. So those are already up to date. He does that by DCJS, which is the state regulated training and that's on use of force, on other state mandated things. This will kind of just bring it all together in a complete package. Right now, I think that most of the stuff that we have in place is good, but there's always room for tweaking and changing. As the years gone by, the last time that thing, I shouldn't say the thing, the last time the policy was looked at was in 2013. So definitely could use some updating on it. Unlike, just, I should say, just like village codes, bylaw and stuff like that in any company, which we all know takes an exorbitant amount of time.
All right.
And effort.
So they're approved by the governor as a potential company that can help all municipalities with what needs to be done or how did you find Lexapro?
Yeah, they're not, they're not approved by the governor. The governor, the governor leaves that all to us. It's, it's a company that has come in into policing. I haven't researched how far back they have been in policing, but I know they're used across the nation. And like I said, that most of the police departments that I know of in the area, Dutchess County, Putnam County, and I do, I do believe Westchester County, but I'd have to double check on that, use them as a guide. It's almost like a guide that once you get in there, they have a tremendous amount of laws in their libraries and that other states have that may not work for them, won't work for us, but it's, it's really an encyclopedia of public, of police rules and regulations of forms and stuff and, and issues with their states, what, what works, what works for them and stuff like that. So.
So I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Steve.
So it's mostly a reference material, reference site? That's what you want to use it for or?
Yeah, a reference and also they will, they will, once we get it done and it's our, and like I said, it's our PDF, it's going to, we're going to own it. It's almost like buying a license for their, their programming. So I can put together the new procedures and the new policy to have a complete, completed policy for that. That's going to include all sorts of, you know, state rules and regulations and anything else that we might want to put in there. How to properly do a, a complaint against a member, any members of the police department on official form and have everything downloaded and ready to go. Right now, we do have a system, but it can, it can always be updated to take a look at it. And give us a real good, solid start, a start based on what we want to implement into our police department that's going to fit the village.
Well, I have one more question. Is this something that everyone in the village will have access to or is this just for the administrative people in the police department?
That's something that we have to discuss on, in, between the village board. We have to discuss on what we want to do. Certainly, I think that most of it can be previewed by the public. If not all, that's something we need, we need to sit down after we put all the policies together. We get input from the public and residents and anyone who lives in the village and we'll take a look at it at that. And, but I think it's definitely something that can, can be done.
Will you, will you take the, you know, you gave us a couple of weeks ago, this 140 something page document. Is that going to get fed into the system? Or is that just going to, we just going to ignore that and start from what they have?
We're going to probably start from what, what, what they have. Like I said, I'm probably going to mimic and take a look at the village of Fishkill. Like I said, just to look at it and see what they have in there. So I can, I can adopt maybe certain things that would fit the village and look and look at it. It's, it's going to be a tremendous amount of reading, to be tremendous amount of, of changing, you know, putting our, our policy in with the village Cold Spring Police. Again, it's our PDF. We, we can, you know, we'll have access to it as much, as much as we want. What we want to change is, is ours for the, for the entire year. We can, we cannot, the thing of it is, is we cannot share that with any other police department unless they are in the Lexapro program. Cause I was trying to get an old copy of one of the other police departments on what they, what Lexapro did for them and you cannot do that. It's against their, their, their protocol on that. So I think it's a good system. Like I said, it's not overly expensive to try for one year. At least to get the PDF together and get our manual together and have it for us. And we can look, you know, next year, if it isn't going to fit us and we already have the, the manual done, we might not want to go back to them again. It's, it's a yearly subscription to a point.
Do you know, do you know what the renewal is each year?
I'm sorry?
How much is the renewal each year?
It all depends from what I talked to the other police departments. It's pretty much gone up every year. So that's something we may want to look at at the end. They, they do it by full-time police officers. That's how they do their, their, their bidding process. And when I spoke to them, I said, we have all part-time. So they asked me how many part-timers we have. I said 13. So they consider that a three full-time member force. And that's why the price is, is what it is. When I talk to the other police departments, they're all paying between seven, well, some low end of $7,000 per year now. And high end would be, I think about 30, which I think the sheriff's department, I'm not positive on that, but the sheriff's department pays somewhere between 20, 30, 30,000. I'm not positive.
Thank you.
We have, we have the ability to, to use this equipment or with the software and the computers we have?
Yep. The software should fit. It shouldn't be an issue with our software. Once I get it downloaded into, into the system. I will be my, I will only have access to that out of any members in the police department for now. And I will, you know, if, if we can get the village board access to it to take a look at some of the things. It's something that I gotta, I gotta go over with the representative on it.
So what they're offering us initially, Larry, is that, what, what, what are they offering us initially? What's their starting point? Where's their base? Baseline kind of, are they starting, like, are they taking input first or understanding our, understanding our community better before they start putting stuff together? Or is it just they start with their template? What's the process?
They're, they're going to start with the template, going to start with a, a base, a base manual that they, they have that's updated from New York State with all the rules and regulations on it. I'm going to take our manual, look at it and go over some of the things that we have in ours. And if it fits, or they already have something similar to what we have, which I'm sure they do. Because again, they're going to, they're going to give me access to the sheriff's, sheriff's one that he, the policy he has, Fishkill, whoever else is in the system probably can also. So I'll take a look at it. We'll start off on a base policy and then I'm going to have to work up through there to get it up to where we want to get it. And again, we have to open up also to public input on it before we do a final draft to give it to, to the governor.
So, but can they use, I mean, they must have a lot of information. They're dealing with a lot of police departments. Can they kind of customize it early on, knowing that we're a small village or make recommendations right away?
They, they will. If I ask them, it's going to be more of a between what we're looking for from the village and, and the representative I'm going to be dealing with. You know, normally if you say we had nothing, if we just started a police department off on today, they would turn and say, okay, for, you know, the force that you have, it'll be $15,000 and we'll give you the policy from start to finish with the state, all state regulations, everything in there. And we wouldn't have to do any legwork. That's why, as we come in, for us doing most of the legwork on it and putting it all together, we're at that low, the low price of, I think it was 3100. Just get us into the system, get us the year subscription. They will help on, on a lot of stuff that I need to get done and put everything together in the, into the PDF and the template that we're going to have.
Does the system, um, does it keep track of complaints against police officers or is that totally out of this system?
That's totally, they're just going to do the rules and regulations. They're just going to help out with all that. And it's going to be up to, up to myself to do, and the village board when complaints do come in. That's a total separate entity. It's not going to be a data-driven where it's going to be in a cloud. They're going to hold it for a certain amount of time. They're just doing straight up rules and regulations. They're also, like I said, giving us all the updated laws, all the updated issues with, with anything that comes out new. And so, and some training, it does come with training. Again, we're, we're going to get to low end of, of just getting in on, on it. It, I mean, it's like anything else where you buy a car. If you want to add in, you know, 27 things, you'll, you'll be up to $12,000, whatever. I think getting into bottom level and just revamping the policy that we have with all the input that we need to put into it, I think it's, it's a good start.
One, one last question, Larry. Sorry. Um, do you have sort of a, or can you give us a timeline, not tonight, but like a timeline to get through this process so that we're on track for the April 1st deadline that the governor has given us?
I really can't at this bit stage. Um, as soon as I get in with them, if we do, if you do approve it and I sit down with them, I was, I was told that for what we're looking at and what I need to get done to get the policy completely done. If I spent, what did she say? 10 hours per week, it would probably take me about two and a half months. That's a round, round out figure, but again, that's not counting, that's not counting on public input. The, you know, we have to have public input wherever we're going to have it for the meeting and stuff like that. With that, it'll take a long, it would take a longer process.
So we're talking probably, okay, so. All right.
We'll, we'll be pushed up, we'll be pushed right up to the, I feel, we'll be pushed right up to the, to the April, April deadline. But let's not make any mistake on it. Um, that's the governor's deadline. The only thing the governor basically said had to be done by April 1st, and I'd love to have it done by April 1st, is that, you know, you will not get, I believe it's the state was grant money for the police department. We don't get any grant money to begin with from the governor or the state. So I wouldn't be too crazy on that. Like I said, I would love to get it done by April 1st and that's my goal. Now, if, 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 I don't expect we won't unless something really, really, God forbid coronavirus takes a stage two and everybody's locked down and, and you're not even be able to have any public meetings. I mean, then he'd have, I think he would have to push that date back.
Thanks, Larry.
I can't imagine a lot of bigger municipalities getting everything done that quickly either. There's going to be probably a lot more to sort out in bigger, in cities and large cities. So, yeah. I don't know about the deadline either. The CUC will rate you and we'll see who wins.
It's done in time for Cuomo to get reelected because it's going to make him look good. Cause that's really what this is all about. This is, this is an exercise and an expense that we have to pay for this project that, that just is just a pure political BS move on his part. Is, is this, is very frustrating for me to hear that we're going to spend $3,500 that we don't have so that Cuomo can look good and tell everybody how he revamped the police department statewide. It's, uh, I don't like it. Just my input.
Most, most of the stuff we're doing already, like I said, we're a small municipality. Most of the stuff that, that we, we have already is, that we're doing, we're doing. But again, like you said, he forces this on everybody, forces it on, on with all his rules and regulations. Recently, we just got forced last year to have a prosecutor for the elevens, the suspended licenses that we had.
And we pay for that now. So you mandate this stuff and you give no money out and then you tell people they're not going to get money if they don't do what you say. I mean, for us, it doesn't matter. We're not getting anything from them anyway, according to you, Larry. But you know, it's, so we're running around trying to do this stuff and you know, how about some help? You want to do this, pay for it, you know? I don't know.
I mean, on the other side of the coin, it's like if we don't do it, things haven't been done. Things have been kind of left on the, you know, the back burner. So how do, how do you get people to start changing? And how do you implement change if you don't force people? Because it seems like that's the only way you can get people to do stuff anymore.
Well, if I was the governor, I would find the money to pay for the things that I want to mandate. I wouldn't just tell the states or the towns and cities, this is what you have to do, you know, and I want it by April.
If you can find the money, that's good. If you can't find the money, then what do you do?
We're finding it and the state has more money than we do. So.
We're lucky. I'm not sure they're going to have a, they're not going to be flush with money at the end of this year. I'll tell you that much. With the revenues that are down, so. I'm glad to review our thing. I don't think we need a deadline. I think we, you know, we can, we can do it, you know, but, so maybe the deadline's a thing, but I, I think it's good to, I mean, I don't, I wasn't aware of what our policy is or whatever. So it'll be good to, to look through everything, I feel, and update it.
I agree. I just don't like being told to do it and then we have to spend our money on it.
Right.
You want to tell somebody to do something, you pay for it. It's not a lot of money.
There are issues I deal with Steve all over the county. I've been going, I have, I've spent more time in Carmel than I probably spent in the village in the last past three months. Fighting for money, fighting for grant money, fighting for money for the access forfeiture unit from DA's office that he gives out to municipalities. I put in an application for certain things. Two years ago, I put in an application for two brand new laptops that cost about $8,000. I got them for the, for the pleaded police cars. Those are all updated. We, we were actually using borrowed, borrowed older ones from, from the Putnam County Sheriff. So I, I've been over there. I've been begging for money. I'm, I'm doing the best I can. We're keeping the, you know, the prices down. You know, again, and it's, and with this now, it's all meeting because of the governor and having to go over there and having to have all the police departments together to try to get this all together by April 1st. And, 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 you know, you're right, it may not get done, bigger municipalities may not be done by April 1st. But I've reached out to Sue Serrano's office since I've been in charge. I've reached out to Maloney's office since I've been in charge. And I told him, I said, why does every other police department get certain sort of grant monies and Cold Spring is getting nothing? And I get the runaround and then I get, we don't have the money. We don't have this. We don't have that. I mean, while I see, I see other municipalities getting a $15,000 drum or a $20,000 drum. You know, then they, then they explained to me, well, we don't have a big enough police department or we don't have a high crime area. So these are the things I've been, I've been fighting since Dave took over.
I appreciate that, Larry.
I gotta change it. I didn't take over. I was asked, I was.
You said yes.
Me for saying yes. Thanks.
Anything else?
It does give us the opportunity, if you want to call it an opportunity, to sit down and look at something we haven't looked at for seven years. So it's, you know, it does four shot hands and I understand Steve's argument on that, but otherwise it would probably, as Dave said, still sit in the back burner.
Yeah, I see the value of it. Don't get me wrong, but it's just how, how it's being presented as a little.
Yeah, they, they like throwing the mandates.
Yeah. It's awesome, nothing, you know?
Okay, so I'll, if everyone, any other questions? Everyone is good with it. I'll make a, I'll make the motion to to authorize the expenditure of 3,500 or not to exceed $3,500 and higher for the higher of next poll.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Does this need to be done right away? I'm curious about this company. I wouldn't mind looking into it more, but if we have time, I mean, I'm fine with it if we don't.
We can wait till next week if you'd like to do that, I guess.
Right, Larry?
Yeah, I was, I was in contact with the rep just the last couple of days. I told, I told the rep that we were going to be meeting either Tuesday or Thursday to hopefully vote on it. I'm sure if we push it off till next week, that wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I'd just like to read about them. I haven't had a chance to look into any of this, so.
I did do some research on them. I had, I had heard about this prior, so I did do some research on them. You know, what, what'd you see if you looked, look for Lexapro under New York State government, New York State Police Department, you'll see what they do. I didn't, I didn't do a lot of it. It was a month or so ago when I first came across this, but.
Yeah, I never looked into it. Yeah, if you want to table it, that would be cool.
I will, I'll make a motion to table till Tuesday.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
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 Give the votes. All right, thanks. Also want to thank Larry. I ran into Larry, was it two weekends? Monday, one of our busiest weekends. And Larry was, 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 was just shot. So it takes a lot and Larry has done a great job. I have total confidence that things get done and it's, it's not easy working on those weekends and trying to get people to work with our little force and people that are, you know, calling in sick and whatever and trying to hustle and round up people and then dealing with this and everything else. So totally appreciate it, Larry, and hanging there.
Thank you. It's all good.
Thanks, Larry.
I'm going to stay on if that's okay.
Absolutely. Okay, uh, next is approval of Roth option to participants in the deferred compensation plan. Would like, someone like to speak to that?
Currently, the, the way we're set up is that people, Roth is not an option. And so what this does is it adds Roth as an option for people who are participating in the deferred compensation plan. The request was raised by one of our retirees and Michelle looked into it and you can see the results of her, her research here.
So it's basically, it's their money. It's taken now, have another place they can.
Exactly.
Invest it. Okay. So I'll make, I'll make, make the motion to approve the offering of Roth option to participants in the deferred compensation plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I.
I. Okay, next approval of batch. I'll make a motion to approve batch number 5782 in the total amount of $25,123.11.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
I.
I.
And finally, before we get the code update and public, public input, we have approval of minutes 10, 15, 20. I'll make a motion to approve those.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I. Okay, we can open it up to any public comment. We have any?
Yes. Oh, no.
Yes, Kathleen Foley, raise your hand.
Okay.
Did she unraise?
Good evening.
She unraised.
Congratulations on a hard fought battle.
Hard fought battle.
Welcome aboard. And then Heidi too, who's on there. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to working with all of you.
I didn't know they finished the count yet, but it is.
Might have called it too early.
Yeah.
I have a question for Larry while he's on.
Run, Larry.
Is he there?
Yes.
Larry? There he is. Yeah. What I, what I think you're describing with Lexapro is like an aggregating service that delivers a model code that you, that we as a community then customize to suit our needs in, in the jurisdiction that the Cold Spring Police Department has in, in, in your jurisdiction. Is that right? It's a model code delivery service?
Correct. You said a thousand times better than I did. I'm off.
Except it's Lexapro, not Lexapro, I believe.
Sorry, Lexapro. Right, Lexapro. Well, I said Lexapro because the, the, it's like, it's like Lexus Nexus or Lexapro, which aggregate academic articles and, and case law. So that's, that's why I was using that, because it sounds familiar from applications in other areas. And it sounds like something that could, in theory. um, although it, there's an upfront cost, it seems like it could deliver, um, a really solid starting point of sort of base level conformance with state code and best practices potentially across the state and then, and then the trustees look at that language and determine with, with the police department and with the public, which elements of those of those model codes work well for us and serve us best.
I, I believe also with that Kathleen, if you look at it and you have them on board, I, it may also bring down the liability of the insurance companies for having a police department because you're using them and they are a accredited uh, company. So if a police department wanted to become accredited, which is a federal and state accreditation, which we cannot as, as a part-time police department, you are considered top of your game. You're following the exact things that need to be followed and you become an accredited, uh, police department, which is.
Got it. Like Beacon has done, right?
Yeah.
Department is pursuing it.
Correct. Um, so that's, that would also probably maybe, I'm not saying definitely save us on some liability uh, that we went through this. We got our, you know, we got the whole basis on that. Um, so definitely also to look at, uh, if we do go that route.
So it brings, it brings back, brings you back to that idea of best practices. And where does the, what part do we have, do we have the money to buy it? What part of the budget does it come out of this thirty-five? Is it your budget out of a larger budget?
It'll come out, it'll come out of my budget. As of right now, we were scheduled to put a new laptop in one of the older vehicles. Um, I decided not to because the older vehicle would have to be updated, uh, wiring and wouldn't be able to take it. So, uh, what I spoke to, uh, Michelle over it on, on maybe taking that money for the budgeted, uh, for this year's budget and using that. So we're not, we're not increasing our, our budget by any means. It's money that can move around uh, to pay for that. So it's not an additional thirty-five hundred on the budget that was already adopted. Uh, it's money that we can use instead of, uh, you know, what I had there.
So as with, as with all things in the village, we're held together with Scotch tape.
Bubble gum.
Exactly. Thanks, Larry. I appreciate that, um, additional information.
No problem.
Anybody else on, Michael?
Uh, I don't, uh, yes, Heidi. Uh, Heidi, you can unmute yourself.
He is working right now. Um, but I wanted to say hello and, um, just, uh, that I'm looking forward to working with everyone. Um, you know, I, I look at this process as an opportunity. Um, the working together as trustees, but also the, the, the police review. So I just, I want to thank Larry, who, you know, we've been only very briefly in touch. Um, and just, just say hello and, um, yeah, and then I'm looking forward to it.
I will. Welcome. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Welcome aboard, Heidi. Looking forward to it.
Thanks.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Before you know it, you'll be up to your neck in it.
Anyone else, Michael?
I do not see anyone else.
Okay, then we, uh, now we'll be moving into our code update, continuing with our review. Um, as I've always say, and we'll say every meeting, uh, we won't be taking any public comment at this time. We'll have, uh, plenty of opportunities to, uh, participate and, uh, push your opinions, uh, at public, uh, hearings. And, um, that said, we're going to move into, uh, continuing on chapter one thirty-four, uh, zoning, which is exhausting to say the least. And this is Marie's third time around.
Before we get into that, I had sent everyone an email recommending that chapters thirty-two, thirty, sorry, thirty-six and one twenty-two be, um, agreed upon without review because they have been reviewed by, uh, by John and by Jennifer. Changes were made, uh, to thirty-six to address private trees, which was an exposure that the village had where a private tree is a tree that's on private property. Chapter one twenty-two deals primarily with street trees, which are, uh, village responsibility. So does anyone have a problem with, uh, agreeing and moving into, um, things that okayed? Both chapters thirty-six and one twenty-two.
No, I'm fine with it.
I just, just had the question and I think I asked you when I saw you about our rights over people's, uh, personal property and their trees.
Right.
I know that John had looked into that. I, I guess. So I didn't read the chapter. So can you briefly say what our rights are, what we're asking or what we're being allowed to do under the code?
Yes. So if, if someone observes, uh, a dangerous tree on private property, they can bring that complaint to the village board or the code enforcement officer. A, a letter, uh, will be sent to the property owner, asking them to remedy the situation. Um, they, if they choose not to do so, I believe that the next step is to call in an arborist at their expense to determine about, to determine the health of the tree or the dangerous situation with the tree. And if they refuse to go along with that, then the village can step in and take, if I remember correctly, the village can step in and take action on the tree because it poses a safety hazard to adjoining properties, uh, to sidewalks and to roads. So it's pedestrians, vehicles and adjoining property. That was not the case before. And, and we've seen situations, most recently this winter, where a private, a tree, a private tree fell onto the sidewalks. Thank God, no one was injured. Uh, the tree didn't fall, the major branch fell from the tree on the corner of Main Street and Fran Street. Um, and, and fortunately, the property owners, um, addressed it after the village came in and I believe the village removed the, the, the limb that had fallen down.
It would be similar, um, with some of those, uh, stone walls that we have in the villages that are privately owned, I believe, right? Um, for example, the, the stone wall on Wall Street, uh, if we find that it's dangerous, uh, and I had asked Charlotte a while ago to take a look at, at the stone wall on Wall Street that I thought was bulging. Uh, it would be a similar situation to something like that, that we would notify the property owner that their wall is dangerous and needs to be, needs to be repaired. Is that correct?
But we don't have that on the books now. There, there's, to the best of my knowledge, there's no unsafe conditions, uh, chapter. There is an unsafe buildings chapter, which we're proposing, but no unsafe conditions chapter. But it would be similar if, if we wanted to, to do that, it would be, it would be a similar, um, set of steps that would have to go through.
Thank you.
Do you know the word? How, how is it worded in the, uh, when, when they send a letter or what's the, you said the first step, it sounds like, uh, it seemed like the third step, which is the arborist kind of should have been, and maybe it is, maybe that's kind of blended in with the request that the tree, like if you see a tree, the first step wouldn't be that the building inspector said you'd need to take that tree down, is it?
No.
Doesn't like or thinks it's dangerous?
No, uh, my, the expectation is that the highway department and/or the code enforcement officer would observe a dangerous tree. Bugsy and his crew is probably where we would get first notification. Uh, unless some branch or limb had fallen, uh, in which case Bugsy is probably going to be the first call anyway. Um, I can go back to chapter thirty-six and pull out the steps and send them to you in an email if you would.
I'm just, uh, I'm thinking, I've always thought about the huge locust, um, uh, northern rate across from Bruce Eisenhower's that would just destroy our house and they're leaning considerably. And I think one branch came down, but it doesn't mean that their trees are necessarily a danger. I mean, maybe they're healthy. So if you thought they were, but you know, it's part of it, the neighbor thinks that they're dangerous, uh, I'd just be interested in to see how a letter would go to Springbrook or a situation like that.
I would think some type of an assessment step prior to that would be important before you start sending a letter out. Is that what you're saying, Dave? It's like, because you know, you could know nothing about trees and be like, wow, that tree is a hundred feet tall. I think it's going to fall on my house. Right. You know, like that could happen in every street around here and people. Then you complain to the village board and they send a letter to somebody telling them their tree has to come down.
We, we currently have an arborist as part of the tree of, uh, the tab, right? Is that correct? The advisory board. Um, so as long as we maybe have a requirement that we need to keep an arborist on that board, um, there's. Yeah, their, their determination is where we don't have to pay. You know, because, because getting an arborist to come and assess a tree before we tell somebody that they have to take it down. And I understand why we should do that, but that gets expensive.
Yeah, I, I think we'd be putting ourselves in a dangerous position if our tree advisory board's arborist was the person who identified that there is a potential danger on a, in a private tree, number one. And number two, the arborist is donating their time to the tree advisory board, not to be, um, not to be the village's arborist, it, in general. But what I will do is I will, I will extract from the chapter, the steps that have to be gone through, uh, and send them to you.
All right. That's great. Okay. Thank you.
So we'll, we'll clean up and move, uh, chapter one twenty-two.
No, uh, why don't you, it, it has, they have to be done in tandem. One twenty-two refers to thirty-six.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll hold both of them.
Also, one other, um, point, I, um, was able to, um, speak with Ted Fink today. And, um, he and I have identified the potential chapters that may, may affect land use and the environment, which would be candidates for SECR. Um, what we agreed to do is I will send him the, um, the chapters, the red line chapter and the accepted chapter, which I'm getting from Clean to No Cade. Or if we haven't yet moved it to Clean to No Cade, I'm getting it from the regular Google Drive. Uh, so I'm creating the red line and sending them, uh, to him. At the same time, what I'm doing is I'm extracting from the red line, the changes that have been made in the chapter to begin preparing the list of changes that would be necessary to evaluate the secret. And Dave, for you, this is the two attachments uh, from Ted, uh, seven pages of the town of Rhinebeck detail in each chapter. So I'm beginning to put that together. Ted is going to put together a draft resolution for us, which will declare the village board as the lead agency in the code updates. Um, he, and I asked him to get that to me within a week and he said he could do that. Ted and I discussed the various ways in which the secret could be approached. I recommend that we have Ted attend a meeting so that he can describe to all of you what the various steps are and what the various paths are for a SECR for the code update. Definitely, chapter one thirty-four is, um, uh, one of the chapters that will be a, a major portion of the secret. Chapter one thirty-two, uh, chapter thirty-six, sorry, chapter, uh, water and sewer are two more chapters. Uh, signs is another chapter, steep slopes, floodplain management, um, HDRB, um, building construction. I.
Is it true that, uh, that they have to review or the seeker will be, you can't like break this up into chapters that were?
We could.
You can? I, I didn't think you were able to do that.
We could do that. What we could do is to, so the first step is to have Ted go through the chapters that are potential ones for SECR. And there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, fifteen, fourteen, fifteen. Fifteen chapters. So there are probably twenty-five chapters that are not in this list. We could potentially do a public hearing on the other twenty-five chapters or subset of them with, with a short form. That, that is to say that these chapters have no effect on the environment. For example, taxation. Taxation has no inv, no effect on the environment. Has nothing to do with land use. So we could get that chapter out of the way with a short form or right.
Why does science have an effect on the secret?
Uh, he felt, he felt that the signs have an effect on land use. And land use is one of the topics for SECR. So it's land use and environment. Uh, streets and sidewalks. Uh, but one of the, sorry, not streets and sidewalks. It's the one about, you know, how many feet from the front of your facade, can you put stuff, et cetera? Um, that one is one that he would like to look at. Not saying that that would be a, a, a topic for, for the, a chapter for the SECR. And he really liked the, the idea that what we were doing there was trying to ensure safer sidewalks by having the materials that are currently in the sidewalks, uh, such as the sandwich boards brought in closer to the facades of the building to provide, um, a broader sidewalk walking areas. Um, but he's going to take a look at all of that. But your question, Dave, was can we do, can we get through some of these chapters without doing a SECR on them? Yes. We can. First one, taxation. He wants to look at, uh, community choice aggregation, which I said, Ted, this is electricity. He said, just to be safe. So he may, he may conclude very quickly that I think we changed twenty-five words in chapter, uh, in the community choice aggregation chapter. He may conclude very quickly, there's no need to do a SECR on this. And we might be able to get that through the, um, through with just a public hearing. So we, we have some paths where we could break things apart and do some of them very, in a very straightforward, very simple manner. And then we have the others, which are going to require more evaluation. So what I'd like to do is have Ted come to a meeting and explain to you all what the various options are if we, for those chapters, which will require a SECR. And then if they do require a SECR, what are the SECR paths that we could choose to do to get us through the SECR process?
So, so one, just one question to give back to the, uh, the earlier I was asking how, if you could break it up or not, I, I'm not familiar with like a code update or whatever, but I, I, I know with the fewer trail, it's, it's a, it's a project that has different, uh, pieces to it, like different segments. And one of the things that you, that I heard or my understanding was that you couldn't segment that. You couldn't say, okay, have a SECR on the, uh, you know, the connection between Stony Point and Breakneck and then do a separate sec, SECR for the section from uh, Breakneck to the foot of Weet Hill or whatever, you know? And that, so isn't the project we're doing a, a total project or with a project that you're getting this SECR for, isn't it the whole code update and not pieces of it?
I, I, I would argue not with, I wouldn't dare argue with you, but I would make the, I would make the argument there are changes that are being proposed, that were proposed by the code update committee that have nothing to do with land use, have nothing to do with the environment. And that those change, those chapters could be brought to a public hearing and have a, uh, a short form. There's no environmental impact. There's no land use impact. If the negative deck, we're done with these, with those chapters.
So.
I have no idea what the legality is. It's just that I, I just want to make sure and I'm sure if Ted is, is familiar with it or you are, that you can segment it, but it doesn't, you know, if we're looking at the whole project, then there's definitely going to be, need to be a SECR. And, uh, so I'm surprised to see we could take pieces out of it.
So if there, if there are, let's say, ten chapters that are, that do have something to do with land use and do have to, we can't separate those, right? We have to do that whole SECR altogether.
You would, you would have to do a SECR on each one of them if you wanted to do that. And I would not recommend that because it's not that all the chapters, chapters are interrelated. But there are some relationships, for example, thirty-six and one twenty-two, those two chapters refer to one another. So those would be, um, I'm not talking about SECR here now, but.
Right.
Are interrelated. And, um, I I forget, we had another one. Um, you and I had talked about where the chapters were also interrelated.
I don't remember it. I know we talked about it because you said we had to hold one. Sorry, Mary, I'm blank.
No, 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 no. Uh, so I think there's some interrelationship. The majority of the changes that, in my opinion, have no, so, for example, swimming pools. Dumpsters, those have nothing to do with land use or environment. And I think we could go through those outside of the water and sewer and zoning. So I think there's.
I'm sorry, once you and Ted decide which ones have to have the large, the major secret and which ones have to have the small one, then we can separate that way, right?
We could choose to do that, yes. Yes, we could choose to do that.
Get finished with the smaller ones, have the public hearings.
Right, we we could choose. Okay, we could choose to do that. Yeah. So are are you in agreement? I'll ask Ted to come and attend a meeting?
Uh, sure. I'll have to give him a certain amount of time to.
I would, I would suggest the whole night.
With that?
I would, I would suggest the whole night that he would be. A major portion of, you've dealt, you've dealt with Ted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is he thorough?
The whole, the whole night, you might not get to the answer.
I couldn't understand most of the letter he wrote two weeks ago, so I figured.
See, I thought, I thought it was good. I I went through that letter and thought it was quite clear.
Yeah, and that was not a set, a seven-page letter for two terms.
Yes.
But he, but he did a whole bunch of, you know, pointing out where everything was and then, and then explaining why we could just change it. I I thought it was, I thought it was helpful.
And it was very expensive. Point that out as well.
We ever expected not to be.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay, so we're on. We left off on one thirty-four and page seventy-nine. Um. I, you know, I think I've sort of gotten the impression that this reading of all this stuff doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense. Um, I'm sorry, we left off on page seventy-two. I was on page, I went to seventy, so page seventy-two. But if there's no comments as I'm going down, does it make sense to just not read the whole thing as as?
I think that, I think it'd be helpful not to read her. I mean, we could read it going through like quickly, but. If you're reading and I'm trying to read, I'm like, I read a little faster than you're reading, you know, reading it aloud, not, you know.
I read, I read with a Boston accent, it takes longer.
So I hear you reading lines that I've gone through and I'm trying to concentrate on lines down, so. Uh, maybe we just take a chunk like, you know, or whatever on the page and review it by ourselves quickly and. Or if there's any comments, let's like take care of them.
All right.
Okay.
I mean. I'm on seventy-two G supplementary sign regulations. And I, I mean, I don't see any comments down.
So the one change there was H outdoor lighting, C chapter eighty-one outdoor lighting standards.
Okay, and that was fine. That was just added in there, right?
Oh, God, it's.
What?
It's scrolling.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, no. Not you.
Well, it might be me, I'm in the wrong thing again.
All right, I can sit again.
I should be okay now.
Okay, so we added out, um, we're in the section that actually, let me see, page seventy-two. It's about the size of.
Fran, I just made a change to I, there's this two, two periods at the end of the sentence.
Okay, that works. Whoops. Yes, I know, I, what I did was, uh. Okay, they're sort of not in line, but that's. Okay, so we have J off-street parking and loading. And let me see. I thought we did too. Down and J number. Uh, let me see. Number perim two, added. Storage of unregistered vehicles prohibited in any district. I just moved the word except.
Yep.
Okay.
It works, yeah.
Because it was, it covered both areas.
Yeah.
And I thought we did some of that too. Okay, and then we end up with the, um, the chart. I thought in the the heading, it says use, and it says parking space per, to me, that made no sense to have that there. And I don't know if that's, you know, in the, in the heading of the first on the left-hand column.
Yep, fine.
Take that out, okay, that works. Okay, um, and then my other comment in this area is. Um, can we be consistent? Do you use gross floor area or net floor area? Because I see. Gross most of the time, and then every once in a while I see net, I see net for home occupation.
I believe that's the only one that has a net. And there, the there, um, I I did see your comment. There, you're measuring interior space, which is why it's net as opposed to gross.
But why, when we're doing an eating and drinking place, are we measuring gross floor area and not interior space?
Because we're measuring not just where you sit and eat or drink, but also the kitchen, uh, the prep areas, the restrooms. Blah, 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 blah.
Okay, I'm good. Everybody else good with that?
I'm still confused. Marie sent me stuff I did not have time to look at today as far as.
Oh, you know, you're in trouble.
Just my, my confusion is, and well, and I started the whole thing by being confused and still confused. As gross sounds to me like every, and and I guess it is in some instances, but it also sounds like. One, one floor and a building. It can be one floor in the building, the interior space, or it can be all of the floors.
Okay, so Dave, I changed the definition.
Okay.
I changed it yesterday and I changed it again today. So it says all of the floors. Gross is equal to all of the floors within the exterior perimeter or something like that.
Okay, and so then what, what, if you wanted to describe or what, what are we describing? Like the floor area of of one floor? Or is there the square foot area or what is? If we're talking about just one floor out of a building, that's going to be under consideration for, I don't know. Uh, you know, a different use or whatever, what's the wording we're using?
So if, so, um, if you take, we'll just take eating and drinking places. If it's a one-floor eating and drinking place, then it's the gross floor area for that floor.
And why isn't that the square foot area? Why is it gross to me? Sounds like it's a combination. It's it's more than one added.
Okay.
You didn't read Ted Fink's, no.
Right, the gross floor area is the perimeter of the building. And the square footage, uh, within that perimeter of the building. As many floors as there are under consideration for, um, uh, for whatever the topic is. So in eating and drinking places, if you have a two-floor, uh, restaurant, it would be the gross floor area. Of the two-floor restaurant expressed in square feet.
Okay, I totally agree with that, but the one floor I just don't get, but if everyone understands on that school, I'll, I'll, I'll go with it, but.
No, no, I, but I changed, I changed that. So if you go to the definition of floor area comma gross, it says of, um. Sorry, I'm going to scroll back. Hold on, everybody. So. Or area comma grows, the sum of the gross horizontal areas of the several floors of a building. Within the inside perimeter of the exterior walls of the building under consideration, exclusive of. Whoops, it's scrolling all over the place. Exclusive of, that is, get back to there.
I got it, Mary, if you want me to read it.
If you would, Fran, it minds jumping along.
Exclusive.
Go ahead.
Vent shafts and courts without the deduction for cars, stairways, ramps, closets. The thickness of interior walls, columns, or other features, the floor area of a building, a portion thereof, not provided. What surround the exterior walls shall be the usable area. Under the horizontal projection of the roof or floor above, the gross floor area shall not include shafts with no openings or interior courts. So you're calling gross floor area the sum of the gross horizontal areas.
Right.
So for the eating and drinking places, one for each seventy-five square feet of, if this is a two-story building.
If it, no, if it's a two-story eating and drinking establishment.
Establishment, so it's still the same thing, one for each seventy-five square feet of gross floor area. So if you've got forty, if you've got forty over forty, you need one. Parking space.
If you've got forty.
Forty over, over.
If you've got, if you've got, if you've got a forty square, square foot, I'm sorry, forty, what's the forty?
I know, I'm, I just threw it out, forty square feet.
Forty square feet is four feet by ten feet, that's forty square feet.
No, I'm, I'm just throwing numbers out just for an example.
All eatery, okay?
It's a small place, you just put a little chair in it.
One table.
Yes, so if you have a forty by, a forty-foot by ten-foot, um, eating area. Uh, as a commercial establishment, you need, uh, one, sorry, you need one, uh, parking space. Because you round it up.
Okay.
You, we, we don't deal with, um, we don't deal with fractional spaces.
Okay, so if you have a two-story building. Uh, two-story eating establishment.
Yeah.
Total of seventy-five square feet on both stories, both floors, you just need one space.
You need two spaces.
Why?
Because you just said I had seventy feet on each, seventy-five square feet on each floor.
I'm sorry, um, total of sev- no, total of seventy-five between the, for the two of them.
If you have, right, then you only need one, one.
Okay.
Parking space.
Got you. Um, so in terms of my question, the difference between the gross and the net, I'm okay leaving it.
Yeah, I think. I think there's only the one net and, and that is because the ex- the, um, spaces. Is expressed in the interior of the building.
Because we're talking home occupation.
Yeah. I think all the rest are, all the rest that are expressed in. Um, uh, square footage, a floor area is gross.
Okay, and I am fine, okay. Okay, moving down.
The building under consideration, isn't it the application under consideration?
It's the use under consideration.
What's that? Yes, the use.
It's the use, yeah. So the use gets you down wherever you are in the left column. And then the right column tells you how many parking spaces you need for that use.
But in the, I'm, I'm looking at the definition of floor, gross floor area.
Okay.
There's nothing in there that says that, that it's the area that you're, that's on, well, it says. The building under consideration, it doesn't say. The application or the use under consideration for.
Correct, because that, that's the definition of, you're looking at the definition of floor area comma gross.
Right, which is gross floor area.
Right, so now you come down here, when you're looking at what your parking requirements are. You, if we can take eating and drinking places, if that's the type of use that you're considering. Then for the gross floor area of the eating and drinking places. Which is, which is measured by the perimeter of the, uh, established. Perimeter of the eating and drinking places, then you have one, one parking space for each seventy-five square feet.
Okay, still doesn't make any sense. I think it's really confusing. And if I was looking at that and they said, you know, you have to have so much gross area. I would look to gross floor area and it would be all of the floors on a building. Under consideration, because it's, that's what it. I've, if everybody else is fine, Steve, are you good with that? Does it make sense to you?
Yeah, because it can be used in more than one application, is all, describes the whole. Whole building, but if there's like one floor is going to be a restaurant, then the, it's the gross area of that floor that you're looking at. Is it that simple or? Am I not saying it?
Oh, no, you're absolutely right.
Okay.
All right, if you all agree, then I will step back.
I hear what you're saying, they've using this two-word, the word in two different ways, so that's can be confusing.
Okay, good.
Okay, the bottom of the chart, accessory apartments, we discussed this last time, do we want one space for an accessory apartment or two? Uh, that was a discussion Lynn had last time. She did two spaces for an accessory apartment was over, was too much. I tend to agree, I'd like to see a change to one.
Is that, I don't see that.
It's the, this, the second from the bottom in the chart.
The chat?
Oh, it's in the chat.
It's in the chat, what's that, can't you figure it out?
Yes, I see it now, okay.
Let's come on, you're picking on me. Okay, yeah, one or two spaces, what do we say?
Yeah, I agree with you, I think one's better.
I think it should be one, two.
So we're going to one. One to twos. Okay.
Make it one, make it one space, Fran.
Space, one spaces.
I was looking at the upper chat before.
Confusing.
Okay, uh, next page, let me see. Okay, here is computers parking spaces, it's parking spaces.
I don't see that on the chat.
You don't see that on the chat, it's the parking space. Uh, number per, perim two, right underneath the chart. Um, however, driveway within the required yard for one family or two-family residents may count as one parking space. Uh, and I said, should this be based on the size of the driveway?
Right, and I responded, I responded to that. Left, left perim two, it specifies how a driveway is counted in a yard setback. Number three specifies the requen- required minimum space, uh, the required minimum of a parking space. They're, they're two different points.
Okay. You, I'm good. Okay, moving on, um. Okay, Mike, this was just more of a point than, uh, uh, not so much, uh. Because I realized that it says that we charge for spaces, uh, fee in lieu of off-street parking. It, the code does give us the ability to accept the payment of a fee or periodic fees. Uh, and we never use that, so that was just a comment more than anything else. I thought, I think periodic fees would sort of be a nice way to do it. Um, rather than you pay us once and you've got the space for life. Because the code gives us.
Actually, no. A- actually, no, when you, you pay us once, as long as you're in that. Uh, as long as that is the use, uh, sorry, the business. That has applied for, um, the parking in loop. If that business changes. Then you have to pay it all over again.
But the way I read this, we could say to somebody, um, you're opening a restaurant, you're required to have two spaces. Um, you have to pay us a hundred dollars per space per year.
If we were, uh, let me, let me, um, play, pay devil's, play devil's advocate. That says that anyone who establishes a business from this point. On is charged a fee per year. Those people who have, who have paid in the past. Might view that as being discriminatory.
It because they paid once and they're getting away with it. I mean, I.
But so what, yeah, so, but what do you do? Let's say there are forty businesses on Main Street. And a new one comes in, that one gets, the, the, the argument here is to, um. I'm sorry, I, I've lost what the point, that one gets charged annually.
Right. Right.
And the rest of the people on Main Street have been charged a higher amount. And they're assuming that that's theirs until they leave that business, until that business makes Main Street. I'm not sure that, that. To me, that seems predatory.
I mean, it was just, it was just more because I saw it, that it has got nothing to do with the code changes, so we can discuss it at another time. It was just I saw it and said, ah.
I think it would go more to get away from the parking more as a business fee or whatever, like that you could end up. Then it could be for everyone moving forward and not just, you know, kind of penalizing someone that's gonna just start a business.
But now, there is an operating permit fee in the master fee schedule. I mentioned this last time, the operating permit fee is twenty cents a square foot or a seventy-five dollar minimum. So, we, we have that, we might want to take more advantage of that. Your point last week was, we're, we're charging people for spaces that don't exist. Right, so maybe what we do is we charge this operating permit. For anyone that opens a new business in the village.
Right.
And, and it's whatever, and drop the fee in lieu.
That should be considered, I don't know if there's a consequence to that. Or if you, that's because you're basically then saying you don't have to have parking spaces, right?
Right, right, you, you could, you could open ten restaurants on Main Street. And, and we, we all know that restaurants require more parking spaces than. On a paint store, for example.
Oh, come on.
So, so, I mean, it, it's a conversation to have. The question is, do you want to have that in, in this version of the code?
No. I mean, I mean, I do wanna have the conversation, but, you know, considering that we're sort of up against the timeline here, um.
It's something we could change at a later date if we don't.
We could, we could add it to our next iteration of looking at code, I mean, I, you know, agree. That this, you know, payment in lieu of parking spaces that don't exist drives me nuts. To me, it just makes zero sense, because we're gonna let businesses open anyway, but, um. I just think it may be something that we should discuss at a time when we're not trying to get through this.
That's, that's fine with me.
Yeah, I think we should, I think we should definitely discuss it and not now, I guess, um, cause who knows how much time we'll take, but, um. Yeah, I think there should be an annual fee and, you know, I think there should be restrictions on parking if there's actually restrictions. But that's not how we work, you know, ten, right now, ten restaurants could come in. And we will give them in lieu of parking, you pay this fee, so, you know, the cars are still gonna be there. One shot, and that's it.
Could we charge businesses, you know, a fee, an administrative fee for opening a business in Cold Spring or something?
That's what this, that's, that's what this operate, operations permit, operating permit is supposed to be.
Yeah, but not everybody's a restaurant, so.
No, but it, it applies to any business.
Operation fee.
But it's, but it's minimal, right, Marie?
Yeah, it's seventy-five dollars.
Right, yeah, we make a lot more.
Businesses times.
Okay.
Pays a lot more.
Or can be incorporated also into a yearly permit, permitting fee, which includes your inspection. Of your building and your respect of your business and, you know, something like that.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
That's kind of what you're talking about with short-term rentals as well, right, like something of that long, that line, but then.
And then if you're talking.
To the rules and building code and all the other stuff.
Right.
They have to be inspected and.
I mean, that, that makes more sense, it's logical, you get your bill, you get your business inspected and, and there's a fee for. Rather than paying for something that doesn't exist.
And then we, and then we could put meters on Main Street.
Exactly. And I mean, I think it's the point that the, that, that they're, the effect of their business, or how, how affects the village. There's, there's a, there's a cost to that, and so, that's what, that, you know, is why a fee is, you know, I think reasonable, you know. And then it could go to paying for meters and then, that, you know, helps alleviate some of the problems, or at least it's, you know, helping to. Pay for maybe parking or doing something in some other area where we're gonna have to invest some money in. Maybe we wanna pave somewhere, and well, you get that money and, you know, you'd be able to pave an area that could be additional parking.
What was the name of the song? They tore down a thing and put up a parking lot.
Right.
It's a gay paradise. Joni Mitchell.
Yeah.
Beautiful.
We ran into a problem with the parking spots in, with the coffee carrier, remember, she was trying to open the coffee shop within the.
Right.
And, and she was trying to avoid, or they were trying to avoid paying for more parking waivers. Because it was an already existing business and.
Yes, it would be a lot clearer if we got rid of those parking waivers.
For like, well, you're, you're expanding your business and adding a new, you know, without a.
In a new use, yes.
A new use within an existing business, but, but it's a completely different use.
Yes.
That would be probably easier to explain than you have to pay for a parking spot that someone already paid for.
It doesn't exist.
Yeah, that doesn't exist.
It's the parking cloud.
Yes, they're in the cloud.
Let's, let's move away from that. We'll, we'll change that in another day.
So Fran, the next suggestion is to move M to T and.
Because they were in the wrong places, T has to do with dumpsters. Dumpster that just sort of hung out, front door dumpsters hung out of nowhere at the end of this whole chapter. And this is supplementary regulations applying to all districts. I thought the dumpsters belongs more up here and the fee should be at the end of all the supplementary regulations rather than stuck in the middle of it.
Okay.
It's just for clarity.
Sure.
So I will do that. If I can do it without making a total mess, it would be nice, and then I had, there it is.
I was gonna say, maybe if you do it tomorrow.
What page are you on?
Can do that too.
What page are you on?
I'm, I'm, I am on, uh, seven, let me see. I'm just moving from eighty-two back up, hold on one second, and I will. Okay, I'm on seventy, seventy-seven, I'm just moving part M out. Just changing something.
Okay, I see where you're at.
Sorry, that goes with there, that goes with there. I will, I will fix this, I apologize, cause this is not what I should be doing right now. The next section. That I looked at, and I'll fix all these numbers, exceptions to, okay, exceptions to yard requirements, this is Marie. Was added.
I, I'm, I'm not sure where we are.
I'm sorry, we're, we're asked, screwed everything up, let me just unscrew.
Seventy-six M, page seventy-six.
I put everything back the way it was, and I do apologize. Okay.
So, um, the. Exceptions to yard requirements, okay.
Oh, yes.
So this is new, on today, on, a person can, today. One can insta- install a fence. Not in the setbacks, front, side, and rear yards, a person can install a fence. Outside of the setbacks, at any height at all. Okay, however. I'm sorry, just, however. Uh, within the setbacks, the limit is four feet. For fences, fences up to six feet are permitted on lots. In residential's, on any side of the residential lot, which is adjacent to one of the three business districts. Now, it has been assumed that if I have a six-foot fence. And it's on, and it's on the perimeter of my property, which is illegal, but maybe someone had received a variance to do that. That if I need to repair or replace that fence, I can repair or replace it. At the same height. The objective here is to get rid of tall fences, so the, so the. So the. Repairs or placement of fences or portions of fences, which are higher than four feet. Shall be limited to, so the intention here in the highlighted area that Fran has. The area that Fran has highlighted is to say that if you're going to repair or replace a fence. That is higher than four feet, it, the new fence, the replacement or the repair has to be limited to four feet.
Boo.
And my, my argument that that is, um, I can understand. Replacing a fence, a fence that's higher than four feet with a fence that's six feet. But if you're repairing a portion of a six-foot fence and you're limited to four feet, it's gonna look insane.
Yeah, it doesn't look insane.
What, what if it's a portion of the fence, you have a six-foot fence, you're repairing a, a portion of it, and you got, you can only put four feet in there?
Typically, what happens is you repair a section.
Right, but still, if you've got a backyard that's fifty feet long. And you have to repair a small section of that six-foot fence in the middle of your fifty-foot long yard. You have a four-foot section in between two six-feet sections.
Right, and what this says is if you had received a variance for the fence, you can do that. But if you haven't received a variance for the fence, in other words, the fence was erected illegally. Then you gotta start conforming to the, hold on just a second. Sorry.
We got a ghost turned your TV on or something?
I had put it on mute and it came out of mute, so the.
It is a ghost.
My house is haunted, I figured.
If it still stays on, it's definitely a ghost.
I'm sorry, I'm done. The intention here is you, you have an illegal fence, and what we're trying to do is get all illegal fences back to legal sizes.
Yeah.
Well, there's a couple, one, there could be illegal, somebody just put it up new, and, you know, I think there's a problem with anybody doing that. But there's also grandfathered fences, I don't know if I have a variance for the, for the fence around my yard. And I'm not taking, making it four foot, I'll tell you that much, you can bring me to court, but that sucker's staying up there. I don't, I don't agree with the four-foot restriction on your back and side yards at all.
I don't either, I, I, I got the same situation, I moved into this house, and there was already a six-foot fence. And all the way down the whole side of my house, so I put another one just like it on the other side. I had no idea that it was even an issue, and then the building department shows up. And, you know, they're all over my whole neighborhood, the whole village has six-foot fences, and I'm like, oh, I had no idea. Just assumed I could match what was there, you know. Uh, so I have a non-conforming fence there, and then the gates across the front are okay height. That open and close, but the sides are already six feet, so I, and I think a lot of people have that situation. Many, many people, I've, I've heard tell of a binder that's available. That has pictures of all the six-foot fences in Cold Spring, and it just for that reason, because the guy was annoyed at what had happened to him. I don't know who owns this, but there are hundreds of them, so you're dealing with the.
So you, you have a.
The question is, why is it six feet? This is the question that most people have, that for heights of the fence. In a non, like downtown historic area, or where you're not blocking, you, you're creating like a. Corridor out of fences all the way down Main Street or whatever, I get that, but. What is it about it that makes it six feet?
The intention for the fence height of four feet was so, such that you would have a visual. You would not have visual separation or be visually fenced in by your neighbors. And so the four-foot height is why it is.
I wanna be fenced in for my neighbors.
I, I agree, I totally agree.
I don't want my neighbors watching me in the garden or whatever I'm doing out back.
Cause you don't have friendly neighbors.
No, I want my privacy.
No, I'm sorry, you don't get that in the village.
Oh, I think we can let that happen in the village, that's what we're here for.
I have well under six feet tall, right under that thing.
Fence, I have probably one of the smallest lots in the village, and if I didn't have a fence, there'd be a car that I'd be looking at to the, you know, to the south of me. You know, just sitting in the parking lot, and in the back, it would be just, I'd be somebody's backyard, they have little films there they have every week, which I think's great for their kids and stuff. And it's great, I have a six-foot fence, I don't have to see them, you know, and they do their little thing and they have like a six-foot brick wall, you know. Basically a brick wall going around their yard, and it's, I think it makes it cozy and I like it, you know. I see no reason, I, I don't wanna see fences in the front yards, or I don't really, you know, I think there should be a limit on how far they come across the front. I mean, on the side yards, but really the backyard and the sides from like, you know, where your building is back. I think that's just adds to your privacy and makes me feel better.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna come in on the other side of this, because I like four-foot fences. But my question to this particular section was, Steve, you have an illegal, give or take, six-foot fence on the side of your, your property. If a section of it needs repairs, are you going to, you're gonna be happy having to repair it with a four-foot piece? Because this, this is if you have a six-foot, well, then you didn't get a variance, you have to repair it with a four-foot.
Right.
And to me, that, to me, if you have a six-foot, whether it's legal or illegal variance or not, it should be grandfathered at this point.
No.
You have to get a permit at this point, like a permit, the building code, I think you don't need a permit for building or replacing in kind, so where would that fall?
Right.
Sorry, you don't need a permit, uh, sorry, if you're doing repairs on your house.
Right, and you're replacing in kind.
I don't, I don't know, no, you still have to get a permit.
No, I don't think so.
No, I think so.
I thought when we. I mean, I'm trying to think of what we did recently, not that recently.
I mean, I think to Steve's point too, that they're talking about the person that took pictures of all of fences and all, all the areas that are six-foot. It's like, why, what, what's, why does someone not like a four-foot fence, or what does that, how does that detract from something? It's like, there's plenty of stuff that I think is more detracting than a six-foot fence.
Yeah, I don't wanna see my neighbors in their above-ground pool all summer, when I'm in the backyard.
They have a, they have a pool, they need a higher fence anyway, right?
Well, I have one, and I don't, when I'm in my backyard, drinking a beer and smoking a cigar in the middle of the day. And there's forty-five kids in their swimming pool next door, I don't have to watch that, it's, I have to hear it, but it's. It's, uh, my backyard is my own when I'm back there, uh, that's not why I built the fence, I really built it because I have dogs. And I don't want them getting out, which they managed to do anyway, but, uh, and so I just matched what was there, cause it was already half-built, basically. You know, I, I probably would have built something that had a little less stock egg to it and a little more open at the top or whatever, but, but whatever. It's, privacy, it's my backyard, it doesn't go all the way of the street, it only goes to the back of the house.
And we're also allowing people to grow hedges, I, my neighbor has a hedge that's about ten feet, it's like now, it just keeps growing and it's, it's whatever, but that's totally allowed. There's nothing in our code that says you can't have an eight-foot fence or an eight-foot hedge.
Right, right.
What's so good about that? Down your, down your property line versus a fence? Because somebody thinks that looks nicer? Either visual police?
No, no. I, I, I think that, so, so again, the intention here was to try to eliminate higher fences, which Steve has seen a book that has hundreds of six-foot fences and then hundreds of six-foot fences. So of course, we only have eight hundred properties in the village. So I'm, I'm
That's a lot of More to the
I'm surprised that there are
I'm not trying to throw my street under the bus, but there's, uh, one in every yard on my street.
Yeah, well, yeah, constitution is sort of the wild, wild west.
Thing out here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think probably my area, there's, uh, there's a considerable number on my Uh, I, I'm not for the, not for this, I, I'm not for four-foot fences, period. I'm definitely not for if you have a six-foot fence and you can't get, put another fence up.
You can put, you can put another fence up, but it has to conform to the code, which is
I don't think four-foot, I think the four-foot's ridiculous. So I think we should change that.
We have to go
Or you go ten feet in and you can have
Who's paying? No, what's everyone else? There's two of us here out of, out of four that say yes.
No, I like the four-foot fences. Sorry, guys. But I have nice neighbors. They don't, you know.
Or in my case, I would be the Mike Pence and I'd be the tiebreaker since I'm the mayor and I don't think
No, I'm sorry. You don't, no, no, no. When we, when we vote, Dave, you don't, your vote is not weighted. You're one of four.
Oh, it is.
No, it's not.
All right. Well, we'll just wait. And if you wanna leave that in right now, that's fine, but
I'm sending a check to Len right now.
I can guarantee you that the people in this village are not for just four fences, that they would want six-foot fences.
If you want a four-foot, put one up.
You remind you
Put a six-foot.
All right, so, so I'm, I'm not gonna make changes on that section right now. We will move on. Yeah, um, okay, next section that
But you said you're not in agreement with, but Fran, you said you're not in agreement with the wording of
Well, I'm not in agreement with the wording because I would rather, it's a, um, where am I? I wrote something. Replacing a fence, a full fence should be, and then you can keep it at four feet. But if you're repairing or replacing a portion of a six-foot fence, um, I think you should be able to match the fence that you're repairing or replacing, or replacing a portion of. If you have to replace the whole, the whole fence, then I think you need to go by code, which is four feet. But if you're doing a portion of it, I think you, you should be allowed to match with, you know, the rest of the fence.
In general, people tend not to replace an entire fence. They tend to replace or repair a portion of the fence.
How do you, how can you say, what, what documentation do you have to prove that?
I have, I have a binder that has hundreds of photographs of six-foot, four-foot, six-foot fences.
Well, I, I have chain link fence, I have chain link fence on two sides of my backyard. Not dying to get rid of it.
I never liked chain link. I think we should give it a chain link in the village.
We should, yeah, exactly.
I think it's
Like a junkyard. I don't know. I don't like
But anyway.
Yeah. Somebody's working, they have a big, they have a trailer now and they're, and they're big jacked up truck and they're next to my house. I don't wanna see that. I want a six-foot fence.
Not only that, you're tying up the, you know, with all these variances for fences, then the zoning has to deal with this.
Zoning, zoning has typically never approved a six-foot fence unless it's been adjacent to an, a business district.
Right.
So that said, you'd be screwed under this, under this code.
No.
No.
Well, you would go for a variance and you wouldn't get it.
That's right.
Right. So you're screwed if you want a six-foot fence, which everybody in the village wants.
No, I don't think everybody in the village wants a six-foot
I, I bet you the majority, I would put, I would put a ton of money on, the majority of people would want
Fifteen bucks.
How much, how much money would that be?
What's your money when you
Whatever tons are, hundred-dollar bills, tons of them.
Okay, okay. You're on, you're on.
We're weighing that.
We, if we can't have those fences, then I want everyone's hedges cut way down to four feet. There's no
Well, I, I agree that the hedges shouldn't be the
It's really distracting. It makes the whole place look like it's, it's confined. We need to have this open, like kind of a, I don't know, big open space where everyone is together.
Yeah, like an
All of my, all of my Airbnb neighbors, every weekend, I can get to see them, get to know them a little better.
Meet different people.
Instead of being an isolationist.
Okay, so, so, so Fran, Fran, if, if the i- if your objection is to the portion of fences, you can take that out.
I think fences should be grandfathered in.
Okay, so repairs or replacement of fences?
Well, this is gonna get, we can just put whatever you want. We're going to a public hearing, so let the people talk.
Yeah, this one's gonna have some
I will argue against that one. So make sure that that one's highlighted.
Yes, I put it in a note
Along with a number, number of other ones, but, okay.
Okay. Uh, okay. So we're going on. Okay, landscaping within and around parking lots. Here we go.
I'm sorry, there, there's something highlighted, um, conformance. Why is that?
Where are, where are you, Mary?
In, in the section that we were just in.
Cause I screwed up.
No, 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 I don't, no, no, I'm, uh, it's, it's scrolling on me.
Oh, I don't see the word.
So in that paragraph.
Fence is high, uh, oh.
Conformance to setback requirements, conformance is highlighted. I don't know why it's
It's not highlighted, not highlighted on my screen.
Okay.
Is it spelled wrong? No. No, it's not highlighted on my screen. I can see that your scroll, your cursor is right there. But I
No, I, I just, okay, I just walked, moved away from it. Okay, shall we move on to landscaping within and around parking lots?
Around parking lots, um, okay, this is talking about the trees that can be, oh, this is trees between parking lots, um. Okay, that's good. The, uh, okay, the last, the question I had on R, C, uh, two-foot wide buffer perimeter of three feet minimum height that should be landscaped and permanently maintained, allowing for visibility. Now, this is three feet, three feet minimum height. Blah, 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 blah. I'm, I'm asking, is this in addition to the tree? So do you have to have the, the buffer in addition to the trees?
Yes.
You do. Okay.
Yeah.
Where are we again? Sorry.
Well, R, landscaping, it's page seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight?
Yep. R, landscaping within and around parking lots, tells you how many trees you have to have, depending on how many spaces in the parking lot. And C said, a two-foot wide buffer perimeter of three feet minimum height shall be, shall be landscaped. This is, um,
This is around, around the perimeter of the parking lot.
Okay. So you have to have a two-foot, two-foot wide per, buffer perimeter of three feet minimum height. See, I don't mind the, the two feet wide, but three feet, which is like to me a, a bush or something, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's in addition to having trees after every few spaces.
Yep.
Okay. And that stays, uh, and that stays, and that stays. Okay. Okay, I got to the point here, scenic view shed overlay district. Uh, and my question of this whole area, shouldn't we pull this and make this a separate section?
That's not a bad idea.
It doesn't seem like it fits in supplementary regulations. So I wanted to
Well, it is
Put it in, I wanted to put it in as what? One thirty-four eighteen, which we're not using.
No. Uh, I would say no to that, but let me, uh, let me, uh, look at it tomorrow, Fran.
Okay, cause I went on and on, yeah. Uh, I've read it and read it and read it and you know, I wasn't sure there's this, one other thing. Calling it a district confuses me because everything else in this chapter is a district and I don't think this is a district the way they are. So I'm not sure that we wanna call it a district.
Actually, it, it, it is, the district is the entire village here.
Okay, so maybe if we can consider a different word than district.
You could just have scenic view shed overlay. I think that's out, I think that's out, upon the Phillips down, is they have a, you know, scenic overlay or I think.
Okay, let me, let me, um, so the first point is, should it be moved and, and where? And should, um, district be removed?
Right.
Okay, okay, let me look into that.
Okay.
And Fran, um, I had a bunch of, um, comments. Oh, I, okay, you've accepted all of those. Great.
I'm sorry, yeah, I, I
No, no, no. Yep. So, so did you, did people read through this? This is very significant.
I read through this whole thing.
Which one? The scenic?
The scenic, yeah.
Yep.
Can't say I have, I've been bad.
This is, this, this is essentially saying that the entire village uh, is part of this, um, overlay district. And that with, with, within the village, when there is a building being considered that is higher than, um, oh, it's scrolling again. Nope, 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 nope. When an action is proposed within the district, that is, uh, whether it's and it, uh, a higher, if, if the structure that is currently there is going to be increased in height or increased in width or depth, that, that needs to be evaluated to determine whether or not the increase that is being proposed eliminates or blocks the view of the areas of the specific items that are listed in this section, then the planning board needs to look at the proposal of, um, the addition or the increase in height and recommend alternatives that would eliminate or minimize the, the, the view that is being, um, uh, the, the view that is being destroyed or, or severely, um, modified.
The one thing that I, as I read through this, I, I can't determine in my head if, as we inventory all of these, uh, areas, if that's a, a complete list. I have, I have no way in my mind to determine that that list is complete.
Okay, I'm, um, so the way the list came about is the code update committee went through the, the significant views that exist within the village and identifies tho, identified those that they felt those views need, needed to be protected. So, um, if, if there's something that you think needs to be added to that, fine.
I wasn't sure why McConville Park is on the list. I know at one point, at one point, we discussed putting the firehouse there.
Yeah, what, we discussed putting a firehouse in a number of different places.
I know we did, yeah. Uh, not that that makes a difference, but I wasn't sure whether, I mean, I can understand the natural, you know, mountains and rivers and so on and so forth. Uh, it's an open space.
That's right. It's an open space. So
Why it would be considered scenic view shed?
Yes, yes. That, that, the point here is that, that there are so many really lovely areas in the village that people enjoy looking at, that new development, whether, and, and new development can be a one-story building going up to a two-story building. It could be a an addition on the side of your house where that, if that addition might block your across-the-street neighbors from being able to see, um, West Point or Bull Hill.
Where, where would this, where, where would this fit in with, like legally? Like, you know, and you're right. And we'll take Richard Shay's house.
I was just gonna say that, yeah.
You know, everyone's gonna bring that up. There was a small house there and, you know, so the small house is there, he changes, there's two bigger houses there now, and that obstructs someone's view. So we're gonna say you can't build that and that legally is gonna have standing?
Uh, according, according to John, this is okay. Now, you may remember, I don't know if you attended, the, 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 uh, the Barcivic house that he took down and put up the, the new two-story white house. No one, no one objected to that from across the street. But the second house that he put up, there were multiple objections to the second house.
There couldn't be multiple. There could be two people. It could, they would affect their view. There's only two people.
Yeah, that's multiple. Thank you. And I have a book. It's all of the
Multiple, multiple.
All the
But you're saying you have a piece of property and you're not gonna allow someone to build on that.
Well, no, 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 no. What we're saying is that the sighting, the S-I-T-I-N-G of the structure should be done to minimize the blocking of any views.
Okay, well
I mean, when, when these people, um, objected it to Richard's house, they lost that argument, right?
Yes, they did.
Basically, they weren't, they weren't guaranteed the view.
That's correct.
Even though their house has been there for a hundred years and
No, 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 no. The point is the house was a new house.
Well, Richard's house is a new house, but the person who objected, that house was not a new house.
Sorry, the, the objection was not to Richard's house. The objection was to the second house that Richard put up.
Which, well, yeah, on me, yeah, okay.
And that was, that was brand new. And prior to that, people had an unobstructed view of, um, Storm King and
What could they possibly allow there that the people would, we're just as angry with? You could put a one-story building up there, which in our, in our, in our code is thirty-five feet and plus whatever, if going with our current formula, thirty-five feet, right now he has a two-and-a-half story. I don't know what the height is, but at thirty-five feet, I, you know, I think that, uh, that's gonna obstruct the view. I think if you put a one-story house on there, it would obstruct the view.
Well, because, because the person
There was, there was a one-story garage, a two-car garage
Right.
On that land. And people were very happy with that. They were able to see above the, uh, the, above the garage. If the sighting of the new house was such that, that they could still see from their homes across the river, they would have been happy.
But that, that's impossible because of the way we, the way our, the way zoning is that the setbacks and whatever, and then the way he could break property up, the property is set in a smaller lot and there's only one way to build there.
So the lot size is seventy-five by a hundred?
Right, yeah.
It's not a small lot. It's, it's
Well, relatively not small.
But in terms of
I mean, we're Doesn't have a huge side lot. I mean, the, the building that's there is not encroaching on Chickie's house, you know? So I don't know what the setback there is in his house either. So it's not like, it's not incredibly wide house. So where, where was he gonna put something if he wanted to build it there?
He would work with the planning board to come up with an alternative.
I, I think we're all intelligent enough to say there's no way you could put a house there that's gonna make the people across the street happy because they used to have a view of Crow's Nest and now they don't.
Yeah, it's not gonna It's a legitimate lot in this village that you're allowed to build on. So there's no other reason, uh, that you can't build there. So it's, it doesn't seem particularly fair for anybody buying, uh, property to develop it.
All of Butterfield.
Didn't wanna do anything that was unusual. You just built a normal house there. How could you say, well, the view said is such that you can't, you can't build there on that lot? But so, so now the lot's worthless. I, I don't, it doesn't seem to work for, you know, uh, normal, normal residential building and stuff. I, I understand some areas that you're talking about on this list, like, you know, the different parks and the riverfront and the bandstand and all that stuff, not building something directly in front of it. But if you have a, you know, unfortunately You know, unfortunately, they were on the east side of nine D and they don't get that view anymore, you know?
So, so, so the ha- the, the property that Richard bought. Was a hundred and fifty feet, actually, it was a hundred and forty-nine feet wide. And a hundred plus feet deep. And he put up the new white house, and then he subdivided. And then he put up the second house. The second house could have been narrower. It could have been deeper to provide the same gross floor area. That they currently have.
What are you gonna have a little slip, a little, like a couple of more feet and that's gonna make them happy?
It may have.
No way, come on.
I think.
I, I'm serious.
There's, okay, another example on White Hill Place. Jack, Jack Ward lived right across from the house mine, just this one, once, one level house. Jonathan Shields owns it, puts a two-story house up there. Now, before you used to look at majestic oaks and a field. If, you know, through the sides and, and the mountains, so we're gonna say he can't build that there now.
You know, are those, are those mountains listed in this list of views that we have to, um, protect? Yeah, I, I think where Richard's, where, where Richard's houses, I, I'm not seeing, I'm seeing ninety south of Main Street. I'm seeing Kemble Avenue, south of the boulevard. Uh, I'm not seeing anything at that end. Say it again?
Storm King, it's K, it's, it's two K, uh, on the list.
Including, so it doesn't, it doesn't list ninety. Um, it doesn't list ninety.
West of Route ninety first, and then it says Crow's. They're talking about right where.
Yeah, Crow's Nest and Snorking.
Says two west of ninety and then Crow's Nest.
Yeah, but that too belongs to Mount Taurus, Bull Hill.
That's, uh, crazy, whatever that is there. I'm just using that example anyway, it's like of, of somebody building on their property and it's obstructing someone's view. I mean, that, that means it pretty much you can't, you would not let Ken Carney build. What do you want, what do you want to build there? Cause the people on Constitution Drive will wanna see Kemble. What's it considered? Kemble Ridge?
Kemble Ridge, that, people, people on, on Constitution Drive can't see Kemble Ridge now.
I can't.
You can?
Yeah, I stand out in my driveway, I can look right up there and see it's, it's a little right down the street, it's right to the north.
It's Kemble Ridge. It goes from Kemble Avenue up to Marion?
No, no, it goes from Kemble Avenue to the train station.
Kemble Avenue.
There's a big house on top of it, we, and that guy wanted to develop it, uh, by buying property from us. That whole height of land there above.
Okay.
If, if you take, if you, if you take the path from the, um, northbound, um, northbound, um.
Yeah.
Right, that's Kemble Ridge.
What is that considered Kemble Ridge?
It's.
At one time it was the property of the Kembles?
Yes, it was.
It wasn't.
Like, okay, I was wondering, Kemble Ridge on the other side of, uh, Kemble Avenue was considered something. Incredibly scenic, but, okay.
So it's up to the, it's up to the. It's up to the, if someone wants to build, um, in this scenic overview area. Um, to determine whether or not they're going to allow it, right?
Yes.
So we give them some guidelines and, uh, and then it's up to the planning board to work with the people who, who are doing, to do, okay.
Ultimately, can we say, well, you can't build it then? The point.
And I've talked to Matt and, uh, the, the planning board is willing to take this on.
Well, what is the, so you get somebody who does play ball, okay, and they're like, screw you, I wanna build the house however, I wanna build the house. And it's conforms to all requirements and setbacks, uh, so I'm gonna build a two-story house here. And you say, uh, well, you can't, like, how, how can you stop them? Do we have any?
Well, you can't.
Authority to tell people they can't build something. It's like a double standard, brother, village code. It says, you have to follow these rules unless, of course, you're blocking a view, and then you can't follow those rules and do what you're allowed to. So it doesn't seem.
You could pay us a thousand dollars and then. And a parking.
Get a parking waiver.
Yeah, you have to, you have to follow, if you wanna build a private house, you have to follow R one, which is one thirty-four dash seven. And you have to get approval for, for, um. Uh, the, for, for what you want to build to make sure that it doesn't conflict with the objectives of the scenic view overlay district.
Seems like you could fight that.
I would just, I mean, I just leery, I mean, I, I can't believe that there's, there's like, uh, legal standing on that, like to put something in there like that. John says you can actually do that.
Yeah, John, John had no problem with this. The only thing that John wanted from this. The only thing that John wants from this is a map. With a map that which outlines the district boundaries.
Oh, I'd like to see that also.
Take a look at any of the village maps in the, in the village office. That's the map.
That's the map that has the overlay on it?
No, it's the map, the map is, the overlay is the map.
So it's a whole village district.
Yes, yes, it's the entire village.
So the whole, the entire village is the village, and, and so why are we putting A, B, C, D, and E out here if everything is the scenic overlay?
S- sorry, sorry.
All directions.
These, these are the view sheds that are trying to be protected.
So if someone behind my house builds, I know, I know we're on a hill, but if they would have built something high enough to block my view. And of the river or whatever, then that couldn't happen either. I mean, I realize.
That's correct. You would, you would object to that.
That happened right in my backyard. I can't see the, I used to be able to see a large amount of the Hudson River. When there was no leaves on the trees and quite a bit of it, when there were leaves on the tree, I can't see it anymore. There's a.
It's because you've got a, you've got a six-foot goddamn fence, that's why you can't see it. If you took down that six-foot goddamn fence, you'd see it.
They tripled the size of the house behind me, that they'd seriously blocked over a hundred feet of what I used to look at.
So, uh, yes, that, so you.
Tear it down.
You.
This is, this is being added to the code, so if they had waited until the code gets approved.
Yeah, they got objected. No, seriously, that did happen, but I mean, you know, I could still see other parts, but, uh. I don't know, it's kinda none of your business. I, if I wanted that, then I should have bought that property, though it was never offered to anyone else other than them. And, uh, uh, that comedian. That, that property never went for sale, uh, to just the public. I don't know, that's, that's another matter, but, uh. You know, if, if someone is legitimately building something, they have permission to build, then I don't think we can.
According to John, this is enforceable.
At what expense? I mean, John, yeah, we have to pay him for his hours, so yeah, he would love to defend this case for sixteen weeks. And then maybe when, maybe not, you know, I don't know. It, it doesn't, seems like a loser to me, I don't know.
I mean, I can see, and it's not like I don't agree with it or whatever, yeah, if somebody, if I was living across from where Richard's house was, I wouldn't want that built either. But, you know, somebody probably didn't want their house built at some point, you know? The house next to it or White Hill at the very end probably didn't wanna see that. I don't know, maybe he had a problem with that. You know, they put this massive house in, behind White Hill Place also, blocked totally all the views. And there's still property there, they can build another house, and I'd so.
Actually, 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 I don't think they can. Um, they would have to subdivide, and I don't know that they can. Uh, the only place where they can subdivide is in the front lawn, in my looking at the property.
Maybe.
Well, well, the west side drive in New York, Trump built all those buildings and blocked all those people's views for. For like ten blocks there, and that was a huge fight, but the buildings are there, so I'm thinking you can do what you want with your property. He didn't build something that was non-conforming or whatever, he, he just pissed a lot of people off by building those places.
We're at eight thirty-three.
Oh, we're overtime.
OT, you get a lot more pay for that, and I know we're pocketing a lot of money lately, but. Gonna have to call it quits tonight, guys.
Okay.
Steve tried to distract us for a while, hoping to get this overtime.
Yeah.
So where, so where will we pick up?
I don't get paid again, do I?
I guess we need to.
It's my last month.
Gee, Steve.
I can't get, so I, I'm not gonna get the overtime anyway, so never mind.
You got like three or four days in December, hang in there. I think, I think you have until December seventh or sixth or something.
The date that will live in infamy.
Yeah, that's the one. So do we start on view shed overlay district next time, or do we wanna move on?
Yeah, let's just start there and I'll, I'll make sure that I review it.
Okay.
Okay, so we're starting on page seventy-eight S.
And it's next Tuesday, right?
Tuesday. Yeah, Tuesday is the tenth.
Basically, there or no?
Um, since next Tuesday is the monthly meeting, it's very possible we won't have much time.
Right.
Um, can we consider a second meeting next week?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Um, what did we, somebody?
Can't do during the day, so to.
No, no. Oh, right, right, um, yeah, Jeff's, Jeff, Jeff sent out that email, and I can't remember what the dates were.
I think, well, we can do the Thursday at twelve, so six-thirty.
Tuesday, the twelfth, you said from ten to noon and break for lunch and continue, that's not gonna happen, right?
I don't know.
Well, I can't be there, but that doesn't mean it can't happen.
Or is there, there is no days that you could make a, a long stretch, Steve?
Uh, not during the day.
Yeah, okay.
No, it's, I'm busy.
Do you see why? You trying to make a living?
Let's, Thursday at, at six-thirty, and, uh, and then discuss a full day.
I don't wanna block anyone's view with all the money I'm making.
I mean, I can go earlier on Thursday.
Fence out of money.
So, we, we've said, um. A, a Thursday, the twelfth at six-thirty?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then definitely the following Tuesday is our third, and we're just gonna have that dedicated totally to C U C.
Right, and we'll start earlier at five o'clock.
And we could do the nineteenth also at six-thirty.
Okay.
Okay.
And then take it from there after that.
Okay.
Twelfth. Six-thirty.
Right.
The seventeenth at five.
Yep.
And the nineteenth at five or six-thirty?
Five.
The difference, go with six some bows and then Fran, I can't, it's really tough for me to.
Which one?
On the seventeenth and nine.
Which one is tougher? Those are tougher, you can do them.
I can do six, I can't do five-thirty or five, like, I need a little bit of breather between my regular life and this.
Yeah, I think around five, so.
So the seventeenth at six?
Yeah.
And the nineteenth at six?
Yes.
And the twelfth at six-thirty.
Right.
Yes.
Gotcha.
The monthly meetings Tuesday, right, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Tim, yes, okay.
Alrighty.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Good night, all. Good night, Catherine. Good night, Michael.
Good night.